Welcome, everybody. Sweet Home Catoosa. I'm your host, Richard Tharp, and today we have two school board members with us today. A pretty important episode. We have Susan and David from our Catoosa County Board of Education. Thank you for coming, first of all.
Thanks for having us.
Yeah, I think it's very important to talk about this right now. Susan, I know you and Gloria had come on and talked about all the things going on within the school system, and that was all great, but thank you two for coming to talk about something else right now, which obviously we're talking about budgets and it's that time of the year and there's a lot of folks online, a lot of concerns about what's going on in Catoosa County with education side and the budgets and all that. And as we've all seen online, there's information and questions and as anything online, a lot of times there gets some information out there that's not accurate. And once that takes hold, sometimes it grows and causes a lot of unhappy folks out there in the county. And you know, this Sweet Home Catoosa has always been more about sharing what's going on great in the community and all these things. But we had Chance on last week talking about the new school year and some changes there. And he hinted at a few things, your budget cuts and things like that that I know you'll get into today. But that was more of a, from a superintendent's role, talking about the school system and all the great things going on and and opportunities that they face this year. But this strictly is probably the first time I could say we've ever had a Sweet Home Catoosa episode talking strictly about budgets and county things. But I think right now it's just hugely important. So I'm not going to do a lot of talk in this episode. It's really important to get all the information that you two have today out to the community where we can better understand what's going on right now, because like I said, there's a lot of concerns. So let me just preface it to start and then I'll throw you the ball by saying, you know, obviously we've had assessed values on all of our homes in Catoosa County have gone up just huge. You know, most folks say, hey, it's 50% in the last two years. But this year in particular, on average, we've seen a 30% increase in the value of homes. And so with that, obviously, property taxes go up. And it doesn't have to be that way. Some citizens say, hey, listen, you know, we have opportunities, we can roll the millage rate back and we can hold things where they're at. And you know, the other side of that was the Board of Education kind of sent out saying, hey, we've got some things going on and it's like we'll have to take some increase. So so I'm just gonna throw it over to you. Let's talk about that and let's talk about how it started and what this looks like. And David, or I don't know which one you want to go first, but you know, you can introduce yourself.
I'm Susan Gibson. I am the at-large seat for the Board of Education, which encompasses the entire county.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Dave Muller. I represent District Four. I'm the current Vice Chair of the School Board. I was originally elected in '06, so I think I'm looking at 17 years I'm on the, on the school board.
That's great.
Yeah, I've enjoyed it.
A lot of wealth and knowledge comes with 17 years.
Yeah, it's been, it's been, it's been good. Definitely. We've had our challenges throughout over those years, you know, we went through the economic downturn, of course, this one, all that good stuff.
Yeah, you went through '08, which was economic downturn. You went through COVID. So yeah, you've, you've definitely weathered the storm, so to speak.
Yeah. So it's, it's, it's definitely been a good, a good experience for me. This year, you know, it's rough. It's, and it's tough because I mean, I'm a property owner. You know, I have to pay the property taxes and I'm, I have to pay the increases as well on, on property. So so it's there and I, you know, my whole wife's family is here. So you know, they'll, they'll let me know for sure.
Sure.
I see them and they tell me and they have every right to, you know, it's their, it's their right as a citizen. But you know, I think we're in, you know, a kind of a perfect storm situation with the property values. And really, I mean, when you look at the property values going up, you know, I just want to say this right away, because and hearings last year, a few folks got up and said, you know, stop raising our property values. Stop approving development.
Sure.
School Board does not. We do, we have nothing to do with the assessors. We have no influence on the assessor's office. We have no influence on developers. You know, we can't veto a development, you know, Chance, our superintendent, he can advise.
No, and
And he can talk. Go ahead.
Yeah. When somebody comes and brings a project in Catoosa County to the planning and zoning, there's a representative from the school board that sits there.
Correct.
They don't have a vote, but what their job is, is to say, hey, this is going to be inherited. And right now, this is where we're at in the middle and high school, in the elementary school system there in that area. And this is what it looks like. So you're right, they don't have a vote.
Right.
But they do have a say to try to make sure we don't overdevelop an area.
That's correct.
So.
So that's, that's kind of where we are with this and, and you know, you just wear a situation out. It's like you come, every year you look at your budget, you look at your projected expenditures, you look at what you're earning and you just kind of have to figure out, okay, we do have a lot of increased costs that, you know, we didn't vote on. So like the school board itself did not vote on some increased costs. Well, I take that back. There were some that we did, but we had to.
And what you're referring to there is some of it gets brought from a state level
Oh, yeah.
levels, not just local level. And, and for folks that know the next episode, right after this one, Mitchell Horner is going to be here, State Representative, to talk about the state level. But that's been online as well, too, right? Is being, oh, hey, wait a minute, some things are state mandated. And then I know you'll get into that as well. So it's not all from a local level as well.
And I think it's important to point out, too, you know, when the state, you know, the state has a lot of mandates, right? So you know, and their funding comes with mandates and all that good stuff. But even if you're paying for something locally, you still gotta follow those mandates.
Sure.
Same thing, you know, if you're supplementing federal dollars or anything like that, you still have to follow all the mandates that go along with that. So
Chance talked about that last week.
I mean, there's
All the reporting that goes along with everything.
Absolutely.
Compliance.
Absolutely. And then, you know, when you look at a budget and you're thinking about where can we cut, where can we cut? Well, you know, if you, I mean, I have this allotment sheet in front of me, not only do they give you money, they give you money in categories. So you get X amount of money for high school, you get some money for middle schools, you get money for, and there's, there's more, there's like probably 19 different categories. And that's, that's how you have to spend it.
Right.
There's not a lot of flexibility with a lot of that, you know, you can't say, well, we're just going to take, we'll take from kindergarten. We'll, we'll take the money we got and we're going to shift it down.
Yeah, we have a little extra, it looks like, and we're a little short over here, so we can't shift money around.
So when you're looking at these budgets and you're, if you think you can sit there and sift through them and say, well, I'm going to find, you know, we're spending too much in this area, we'll cut that. So you know, put, you can't do that. So I mean, there's some of that. But also, you know, when you're looking at the, this perfect storm and stuff, you know, one of the things that really, it drives me crazy, it's driving me crazy for 17 years is that, that local five mil. It's, it's, and I don't think a lot of people realize, see, the state can come in, you can talk in any time, but I apologize.
No, no, we're good.
The state can come in and factually say, you know, Mitchell can come here later and he's a good guy. He can, he can factually say, and it'll be a truthful statement, the state fully funds QBE. That is 100%, that is 100% correct statement.
So real quick, break it down for the folks watching. What is QBE?
QBE funding is the quality, quality basic earnings for education. Okay. So you get earnings that I think there's nine different categories of weight through FTE. So like, you know, you get, if you have special ed students, FTEs and special ed get a little bit weighted formula. There's about nine different weights as well as regular FTE. So you get, it's FTE, so it's the number of students that you have. Sift it through all those weights is very complicated.
Sure.
Also with what they call TNE, which is the teaching and experience, was the teachers you have, where they fall on the pay scale for the state, you know, how many years of teaching do they have, what degree level, what experience do they have? That goes into a formula with some other stuff. And then it comes out and you get a total QBE earnings. And this is on, this is on the Georgia Public Education.
So QBE is what the state's going to give you?
Correct.
By, by those categories.
By those categories, what you earn.
What you earn, right. And Chance laid that out, too. You know, if you've got a kid in this grade and this block and, you know, they're this type, you know, if they're special ed or if they're overachiever, you know, it's, it's, it's complicated, but at the end of the day, it's kind of basic. And QBE is the state money that the state gives us for our educational system based on all those metrics. But here's the state saying, hey, Catoosa County, we're going to shove this into the table here. Here's your pot for the year.
That's correct.
Okay.
And one comment I'll make there is that formula has been in place since 1985. And so it's definitely outdated. And I think Mitchell will probably
And he has discussed that a little bit, too.
But you know,
Correct. He thinks that's an outdated formula and they've brought that up.
It's going to take a lot to unwind all that.
Sure.
Come up with a, a good solution.
But for right now, it's the one you have to work with.
When we have, when we have to work with. But here, and here's where we go into it though. So it'll, they can say, we fully fund that. That is true. They fully fund that.
Okay.
They give us that money. But then they take or turn around and they take, they take $13 million of Catoosa County property taxes.
So how much do they give? Let's say
So they give the total, the total, I think, if I'm looking at it correctly is 96. If I'm looking at it correctly, it's 96, 96.4
Million.
Million.
So the state says, Catoosa County, we're going to give you 96.4 million roughly, but at the same time, we're going to take
I'm not putting on pink glasses on the podcast. So we're just, we're just going to deal with it.
You're saying they come back and also take 13 million?
Yeah.
Now that 13 million they're taking is for what?
They call that the local, the way I've read it before in the past, it's the local five mil. So basically what they do is they look at property values, assess property values, and they say, we're going to take five mils of that back. So it's like me telling my son and telling everybody, I give my son $10 allowance every Monday. But then on Wednesday, I turn around, I take three back, but I'm still telling everybody, I give my son $10. You see what I'm saying?
Sure.
That's, that's the best way I can illustrate it because that's, it's all after the, the earnings. So they can say, yeah, well, we fully funded, but then we're going to turn around, we'll take this. And this has always been in place. And this is where the property values, assessed values really impacts. Because then what they do is they do something with an equalization grant. So the money is taken to fund, you know, poorer communities.
And that's what, so that's what I was going to get to. So they give you 96, but they say, we're going to take 13 back because we've got other counties in the state that are poorer than your county, for instance, that we need to equalize a little bit and give them some help. There are farming communities, whatever they are that makes them that way. And so that's it. And I've heard the people talk about that our county is considered a rich county. Right? And that's based off property values and other, other metrics, I'm sure. So that 13
Doesn't come back.
Doesn't come back.
As a matter of fact, I think there's some, and I think there's, at the budget hearings, there'll be some presentations on this. When, when we started looking into it, we were like, all right, well, you know, ours, they're taking more money because all of a sudden Catoosa County is trying to shore up their property values, which, you know, they have to do.
They did. You're right. And we kind of got out of compliance, from what I understand.
And that's, you know, they
Tried to keep the values down.
They have to do that. But what that does is every time, so that means when they, when they take that local fair share, that value grows because it's worth more. So it's grown. So we're losing more. And then on the equalization side, we get less because our, everything's increasing.
Which goes to speak about some people saying, we're letting the county grow at a rate that actually hurts us, not helps us.
That's correct. So, so we're kind of in that situation where they're, they're taking more back. And I really just, I feel like that is, that is based on the Catoosa County property tax values. So I mean, they can say, we don't take Catoosa County property taxes. Yeah, they do. Because they're saying, this is what we think you should be paying for your own school system. So they, they just withdraw that from the earnings.
Okay.
That's, to me, that's, that's equivalent as far as I'm concerned. So, you know, and that's $13 million. So this, for this, for FY '25. That's a lot. And now when you look at, we can talk about healthcare, of course, I guess in a little bit, because that's, that's been the real kick in the stomach. And when you talk about this perfect storm that we're talking about, you know, I've been, like I said, we talked about this. I've been on this board for 17 years. And the amount, you know, I think, I forget what I read. I can, I can look at it real quick. When I look at in the 17 years we've done, let me say here, I apologize. So if I'm looking at so from 2006 to '23, we're looking at, we've only raised the mill rate twice. In 17 years, we have only raised, the school system
The school board.
Has only voted to increase the millage rate twice. We've maintained the mill rate four times. We've taken 11 rollbacks in 17 years that, in my experience. The increases were in '07 during the recessions, the recession times, and then in 2013. And then there were a handful of years where the rollback was actually higher than what our mill rate was. And we actually kept our mill rate the same and took the lower. What years all that falls on the calendar, I don't know. That's just a snapshot. But that's kind of like my 17 years. So I'm always like, you know, we, we, in the 17 years, I feel like we have a solid history of really being good stewards with taxpayers' money. Maybe too good, because I think that's part of this storm that we're in right now. We have one of the lowest mill rates around. I mean, you look at the surrounding counties outside, I think, Dade, maybe Dade or one of them, I think, well, maybe might have one a little bit lower than ours. But other, as far as the other counties are concerned, ours at 15040 is, is one of the lowest around. So and we've rolled it back over the, especially lately, over the last few years, because you know, we were doing okay. And to be fair to our taxpayers and to all constituents, we try to do as much as we can. And now, so now all of a sudden you have this higher assessed value. You got this increased healthcare cost, which we'll get into some details on that and how that's in the change.
Yeah, because that's what people, so people are saying, you roll the mill rate back. So from a county, the Catoosa County Board of Commissioners, just yesterday, kind of rolled their budget out. And they told everybody they're rolling their mill rate back. And they're rolling it back to try to keep from where that 30% property tax, they rolled it back to where it's a minimal increase. Okay? And so that's what we were talking about, too, is most folks say, okay, look, you're not going to roll in your mill rate back is what you're projecting. So you're going to leave it alone, but if you don't roll it back, that means we're going to take a large increase. And most people, because this 30% number has just been pounded out there, right? Everybody's property tax across the board is showing 30% on average. It's not just a flat 30. And so in their minds, if you don't roll the mill rate back, you're essentially asking us on your portion of the bill, which is roughly 70% to hit us with a 30% increase in our property taxes. And so that's where the mindset in the community is right now. So your response to all that, kind of, I know is, it's not a quick, easy answer. And you've already addressed some of that, but you would say what?
I would say, did you want to talk about?
Yeah, I will. I will. Yeah.
I would say, one of the things, a couple of changes over the last two years, three years, maybe, has really been shocking, has been this increase in healthcare costs. I, I forget where it was, but I know it's, it's going up to 1,700 bucks.
Yeah, yeah.
Per, and that's the other, $1,700 per employee per month.
From like nine
From like nine something. So we're almost at, you know,
Almost double.
Chance threw out a number. He said the last two years, it was to our county, state mandated insurance was an increase of over $10 million. That's right. Yeah. So
That's correct.
I thought, holy smokes.
But let me address something. What they're going to, what, what can be said, again, I want to make sure that, you know, the state can come in and say, we fund the increase. That is a true statement with something, some things left out. Yes, they fund the QBE earned positions. Right? But they don't fund everybody else. So like, you know, we definitely have more teachers than are earned. Every school system does for the most part. You know, so all the teachers that are what we call title teachers, which is federal program, they're not, they're not funded. Or a lot of some of our assistant principals, they're not funded because you only earn, you know, a few assistant principals, you only earn a few councils, you only earn social work, you know what I'm saying? So anything that we have over that, which let me just say, you cannot run a school system on what you earn.
Right.
For nine, 10,000 kids, it's not, it's not going to happen. So you, so basically what happens is, yes, they can sit here and say, we added money to the budget for that. We funded that through the QBE formula. We've taken care of that. They've only taken care of earned positions. So on our allotment sheet, which again is all, it's public information.
Sure, sure.
And I think we're actually going to have these for everybody to look at, because it's a good one pager. They gave us $16 million in health insurance. And I think we're at $24 million of cost.
So $8 million shortfall.
Somewhat, yes. I don't know the exact numbers of funding, but
That's in eight year?
But I, that's in a year. That's, we only received, with this massive increase, we have only received $16 million of health insurance supplement for earned certified teachers. Okay? So, so we're not, that's not fully funding it, right? Because we have to fund power pros, clerical staff, maintenance, cafeteria, all, all that other stuff, bus drivers. We have to do all that. And I think that, and then, so this is kind of what I'm talking about, that perfect storm. You know, you have this thing where they're taking, our property values are going up so quick. So they're just all of a sudden it's going, and you know, now we'll get, we're losing 13 million. We're not going to get a lot back on that austerity, you know, and then they're going to say, well, you got the health insurance. They're only, they'll say they fund it and they fund the QBE version of it, absolutely. But there's a whole lot left out of the picture that's put on the backs of the, the counties. And they said originally, two years ago or a year ago, they said, well, we're going to do a three-year phase in for your classified folks. So it won't be such an impact, such a hit. Now, they changed that. They said, nope, you can do it all now.
I think the Senate did that, too, Richard.
That was, you know, and so it's like, it's, it's that, really, when you really start to boil it down, you look at that, you know, you got your 13 million, then you got the increased cost, uh, cost of health insurance. And then, you know, I mean, it's teachers are, it, that is a very hard job.
Oh, sure.
And I know some people look at it and think, oh, I would love to be a teacher. Well, until you got 32 sets of eyes that don't even want to pay attention to a word you're saying, it's not as good. It's not all, it's cracked up to be for sure. But it's, 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 you know, it's just, it's, we're just in a really rough situation.
Yeah. And I, I want to add one thing about the mill rate. I said, so the state requires, we cannot drop below 14. And we're at 15.040.
Okay. So that's great information. So the state will not allow you to go below 14. What happens if you do go below 14?
You don't get your equalization.
You, you, so people could say, well, just go below it. And what's the penalty? Well, the penalty is so substantial, it wouldn't offset going below it.
Right. If we took the full rollback, we would be at 11 something, which is below the 14. And so, I mean, you can see
Your, your, your hands are tied that way.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And what I was, um, what I was going to say also, you know, the other part of the perfect storm is the governor gave the teachers raises, which is a great thing.
Sure.
Great thing. But he only gave these, these teachers raises. He didn't give all the teachers raises. So unless they're earned on this sheet, the county's on the hook.
To make sure it's all fair for all
To make sure it's all fair for everybody, so that we have to, they have to go back, calculate what percentage is that on a teacher on 190-day cal, calendar year. Look at that, get down to a daily rate and then start doing the same percentages for everybody else. And that adds up. So that's why I'm talking, there's a lot of perfect storm situation happening here. You know, when you look at, you know, we were good stewards, you know, over the 17 years, we kept, kept our property taxes real. We've taken the rollback quite a few times. So good or bad, it all depends on what, what your perspective is. Property values have gone up. You can argue that it's, it's not good, but you can also argue that it is good. Depends on, depending on where you're at.
Yeah, you know, and that's sure. So, you know, a lot of folks say, well, that's great. Listen, I've lived in this home for 20 years. I plan to retire, die here. So it doesn't matter if you think my homes were 200 or a million. It doesn't matter to me in the sense that I'm not moving.
Right.
So, but now I'm having to pay more tax to stay here. And I'm on a fixed income. And that's really where a lot of folks are at, is they're on a fixed income.
So there's a couple of things to that. The, the waivers that we've done or the exemptions, we'll call them.
Yeah, sorry.
So we, they, they outpaced what we were anticipating getting. And so we ended up giving more waivers.
So what is that? Just real quick?
It's, it's the exemptions for 65, the spouse that's of a dece, you know, the 75, where you get the exemption from the school tax. Catoosa County gives more, our school system gives more exemptions than most around. We give them for veterans. You get some homestead exemptions. We recently, I think it's going to be on the ballot this time, David, or maybe it just voted in, that if you have a, if you have a a surviving spouse of someone that qualified for the exemption, that you can grandfather in and keep that exemption even if, if you're not 75. And, and that outpaced the income that we were getting back in.
And a lot, yeah, a lot of those early exemptions, you know, when you talk, because I hear that a lot, you know, you need to give, you know, right now it's 75 full exemption.
Right.
And I hear that a lot and you hear it too, right? In other words, if you look at how long the average male or female and the mortality rates, and so it's like, you know, most people, there's a large majority that say, I'll never get that benefit because, you know, what, you know, and that's a bad thing in itself. But they say, why don't we match and roll back to say 67 to match more of a retirement age? And I thought to myself, okay, even if we just come back and say, we're going to roll it to 70, there's got to be a dollar amount associated from what's now to what's here. And we know that's got to be passed along now to the group that is still participating. And what's that look like? And so I know that's complicated.
There's a lot of, and I've seen some stuff regarding that, you know, and the, the idea is, well, how come the new development, the money you get from all the new development hasn't offset the need for a property tax increase? And I think there'll be another slot on there, at least I've seen it, where the exemptions outpace the new development, the revenues we get from the new development. Because, and you know, we have a lot of exemptions, you know, so it's, a lot of it's merit-based, income qualifiers lower. So like 65, you have to have poverty levels and things like that. So for folks who are on fixed income or only living on social security, there is mechanisms in there to, to have some exemptions in there for them.
I'm not trying to push those, but for somebody watching right now, and the light bulb just went off and they say, wait a minute, I may qualify. How do they even find out if they qualify?
I think they call the tax assessors.
Okay.
And I think it does.
And I think they have to.
Yeah, I don't think it's an automatic. You have to go and get it.
Call. And you have to ask about it and you have to apply for it.
Even if you're 75,
Yes.
That's just automatically not going to hit your tax bill.
That's my understanding.
You have to go.
That's right.
So, okay.
It's in their hands to check on it.
Yeah, next year it'll be worse.
Yeah.
I'm not trying to push that, but there is a lot of folks out there saying, you know, I need relief. I mean, I'm just getting hit. I'm on a fixed income. And so, you know, but you're saying also that, hey, we projected this much.
Yeah.
Because we really didn't know.
Yeah.
And now we look at it that it's actually here and we're paying it. And it's like, wow, it, it overpaced what we projected.
It, it outpaced the new development.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
So what people thought would be an offset.
Right.
New development's going to pay for that and it's going to help push it down.
Yeah.
You're saying the exemptions outpace that.
That's the slot I saw.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
So I mean, I think when you look at all this stuff with the, between the raises and the increased healthcare, just in the, you know, the, the history of Catoosa County really keeping their taxes low, this is kind of where we're at. So, and, you know, like I said, I don't understand the whole assessor thing. I know it's been drastic. So
From my understanding, and obviously I've said on here that I, that Ashley's more than welcome to come and he can explain those things. Being a county employee, I know that's a little tricky as well. I get that.
Well, he's just trying to keep us in compliance.
He, he was. And that's where a lot of folks are like, how in the world did we go up 50% in two years, essentially? And yes, from, from my understanding, the state came in and said, you're out of compliance. You're not keeping pace with what we know the values are. And, you know, we can't let you do that. They fined Catoosa County. And I'm not going to throw the exact dollar number out because I'm not 100% sure of that. But they fined Catoosa County. We had to get them to compliance. And the reason I was told that they held it back from raising it is because they felt we were in this bubble. We're in a bubble like '08. And we know in 2006, home values peaked, and so they kept going up. And so we don't want to keep going up thinking we're at this bubble because then when it bursts,
Yeah.
property values are going to pull back. Might happen drastically in 10, 11, 12, right through those years. And we don't want to be in a position where all of a sudden we're looking to come back the other way. And it just didn't happen. Now, I still think we're in a bubble. Don't get me wrong. I, I'm 100% we're in a bubble. I have already seen in my line of work, the amount of new starts in homes is down. I talked to people that install air conditionings for new homes and they say, this time last year versus now, I'm installing half as many units. Real estate agents are talking about homes that used to have multiple contracts in a short period of time are now sitting on the market longer. And we're in a slowdown. It's happening, but it takes sometimes up to a couple of years really to feel that. So we're at where we're at. State came in, raised values. You know, there's also folks that could say, well, you know, what would have happened theoretically if the state or the Board of Assessors hadn't have gone up 30% this year? I guess you would have had to raise your mill rate, right? Because you tried to meet a budget. So I mean, there's other ways of looking at that.
Exactly. And, you know, on that local, when you look at the equalization grant and the local, the local mill, this is actually on a two-year life. So that, that local five mil of 13 million is based off of the values of two years ago. So we just went up this year.
So two years from now, we'll be feeling the pain for this, is what you're saying.
Yeah. And that's, it's, and I'm just gonna say this, and I, I can only say, I didn't research this, what I'm about to say fully. So I, I welcome anybody to, to fact check me on this for sure, but we're, we're one of the few states that does this local. Most, most, most states just weight their poverty. Just the way we weight special ed, CTAE gifted, all that stuff, the way they waited. Most states do the same thing. They'll do a weight for, um, economically disadvantaged FTEs as well. That's the way most states does it. And that's what I think Georgia, cause if they, if they would do that, we get $13 million. We get to keep our local property tax money.
So a couple, a couple of comments. First of all, one comment, uh, Richard, the state is also sitting on a surplus of close to a billion dollars. And so it would be nice if the state would maybe take a look at that and see if there's some way, and that, that might be a Mitchell question too, is what can we do to maybe tap into some of that? I don't know that there's, you know, I'm not down there. I don't know what, what his, you know, thoughts on that would be. But, but there's a huge surplus sitting at state level.
Yeah, Mitchell talked about that last time he was here. He said, you know, they were looking at it and he was like, you know, Mitchell's comment was, we do have a surplus. And then I look at the state level and I'm thinking, well, why are we out kind of basically getting a loan over here when we got a surplus? We could save the taxpayers a lot of money by not paying interest on it. So I know Mitchell will talk to that because one thing I think most folks that know Mitchell knows, I mean, you know, he's pretty astute on what's going on and he's really looking out for what's best for us up here. But here again, um, he's one vote, right?
That's right.
Mike, he'll say, he had a bill that he was sponsoring and, um, it was gonna be the 1% added on tax for a county to use to offset certain portions. That would be the school portion.
Yeah.
But it would be a portion of their sales tax bill. But by the time it made it all the way through, it wasn't the same as what it started as. And that's the problem. So, you know, a question from a viewer was what cuts has the school board made going in? So the question, the exact question was, has Catoosa County school system made any cuts this year in preparation to lowering the tax burden on the Catoosa County taxpayers? If so, what were those cuts?
Yeah, I can, and I could speak to that. Um, there's been right at 70 positions that have been eliminated. And it's a, it's a blend. It's teachers, it's parapros, it's not any one particular department. So they've eliminated 70 positions so far.
From last school year to this school year.
And looking, there's po- potential through attrition and different things to eliminate more, but that's where they are right now. Um, our, our finance director has done a great job at, um, looking at shopping, I'll say, uh, vendors. You know, can I get toilet paper cheaper if I buy it somewhere else? Uh, another thing they're doing is looking at doing, um, analysis on insurance policies for general liability. Do I, am I getting the best thing for the buck? Is the deductible where it needs to be? Can I get another better premium somewhere else? So they're doing some things like that. Um, it's, uh, so far, that's amounted to five point, roughly 5.6 million dollars that they've cut just this year.
So from last year to this school year?
Yes.
You cut over $5 million out of your budget.
That's right.
Going in, pretty much figuring you were gonna be up against the wall about certain things this year.
Yeah.
So you did go in and, and, and lean things down as much as you possibly could for where you're at. Obviously there's always things you're looking at currently, but you just didn't stay where you're at and say, we just need more money.
Yeah.
Tried to make cuts.
Well, and another thing, you know, uh, any corporation, you look at any corporation. And one of the, the top expenditure, if maybe the top two is gonna be labor, okay? And so you'll start getting into the meat. If you start, I mean, if we went through a riff, which is gonna be a, a solution, it's not an ideal solution, but it is a solution. Then what do you, you start looking at any other business, you start losing services. So what are those services? Okay. Are we gonna cut sports? Are we gonna cut, um, arts or theater or, uh, electives? And, you know, foreign language. I mean, you have to look at that and see where are we gonna cut. Now, nobody wants to cut any of that. We want good services for our students, cause that's what we're here to do, serve our students.
Sure.
But reality is, that's where cuts would have to happen that would potentially make a significant income. Um, you know, in, in the budget.
90% of our budgets is payroll.
90% of it, yeah.
So I mean, and Susan's right. So, you know, we did a riff, I forget the year we did it. Um, and it was, I forget how many positions we wound up cutting and it was, it was a riff, cause it wasn't through attrition. We just knocked them out. And, you know, I think, and I'll just tell you right now, good or bad, I'll never support another one. I'll, I'll never support another riff, so, um.
I mean, you gotta increase class sizes if you do that. There's a lot of, on the other side of that, you cut teachers, then you gotta increase class sizes and they're already, you know, pretty full at where they are. So again, to David's example earlier, you got 30 little kids sitting there looking at you and don't wanna pay attention. Well, now you got 35 or 40. So that's what you look at. It's like any other place, you cut service.
Yeah, I mean, any business. I mean, if I've got 100 employees and all of a sudden, you know, I have to cut down for budgetary reasons and I cut it to 70 from 100, somebody's gonna feel some pain.
That's right.
That customer on the phone saying, hey, I can't get through, or why is my order not getting here quick enough? You know, I used to get here in two days and I was taking four. I mean, you're gonna notice a difference in services, right? I mean, because you, how could you not?
Right.
But I, you know, then that all goes back, so you make cuts, but it's, it's still not enough.
When 90% of the budget is payroll, is, is payroll and benefits, basically.
And we, and, you know, just, and I know they're gonna talk a lot about this at some of these hearings and we've talked about it at board meetings. I mean, often, you know, if you look, so we do, we have one of the lowest mill rates around, right? But look at our teacher salaries. They're also some of the lowest. Our starting salary for a teacher, I think only one other county is lower than ours in this area. You can, I mean, it's, it's, when you think about what they do to become a teacher.
Right.
Um, you know, although the, the education that they have to go through, the certification process that the PSC puts them through. I mean, you don't just graduate from college and boom, you're a teacher. Right? There's a whole other licensing part that goes along with that as well. So, um, it's, I mean, it's, it's a rough environment. And then, you know, post pandemic, you know, some of these kids don't wanna be there.
And that's, I mean.
To that, um, you know, he called it civil war. He said, you know, the, the pandemic was like civil war.
Right.
And he said, we're in reconstruction right now.
Yeah.
You know, he, he said, Dina kinda, Dina Reese, our former superintendent was there and she got us through the civil war. And then he says, I got on to be school superintendent and now I'm basically in here doing reconstruction. Because it did, it changed the kids. It changed the landscape of a lot of things and how the kids got taught and.
What they value.
Definitely.
You know, you know, for when you get, when you go through a year and a half and you say, you don't have to do X, Y, and Z. And then all of a sudden, two years later, say you have to do X, Y, and Z, kids are pretty slick. They're gonna be like, why? If, if I didn't have to do it back then, why is it so important now? Just because, you know, the pandemic was going on, you know what I'm saying? They're pretty, you know, and then trying to convince a 16-year-old, 17-year-old, 15-year-old, I only deal with high schools, so.
But you know, and all that said, our test scores
Yeah, good.
For, are really good. I mean, they're for, for most, in most categories, they're at or above state levels. So even through all that pandemic and all that.
Oh, and every county suffered with that. I mean, it wasn't unique to Catoosa. I mean, the whole country, we suffered through that. Um, you knew not being in a classroom setting, that things were gonna suffer.
Right.
You had to do, and like Chance said, it wasn't an option where we could just say, well, hey, we think we've got a better handle on it here locally. We'll let our kids come back to school. Just wasn't an option, right? Um, you know, it was, it was from the state and the government to be able to say, you can go back in. But we knew the kids were gonna suffer. There was just no way they couldn't.
That's right.
Um, you just don't get the same attention, right? If, if I give you a book and I say, you need to study that book and leave the room and I come back and give you a test on it versus I give you the book and I stay here with you and we have some one-on-one and I'd say, you know, here's some things you wanna highlight in that book that are really important. Well, obviously you're gonna perform better, right, on that test? Because you had instruction from a teacher.
Right.
You know, a lot more. And so the online setting, so, okay. If you're gonna tell the average citizen out there, this is really, really, wherever meets the road, you know, we're in where we're at, but you make cuts, great. But at the end of the day, we're still where we're at. How do we, how does a citizen in Catoosa County kind of grapple with that? I mean, what, what's, what would you tell them, I guess, at the end of the day, you know, if you were having a one-on-one conversation, which I'm sure you've had a few, being a, a, a school board member, just in general, I mean, you know, um.
Well, surprisingly, let me address that. You know, I have not, I don't know about you. You said you had three.
I've had three.
I've had zero emails. I have not, I had one phone call. And it could be that a lot of people don't know who I am, but.
We'll change that for you here.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, but I've had, no, no one has come out and asked me a question. Uh, my, I think my mother-in-law might have had, we might have had a brief conversation about it, kinda explaining the situation and we, we kinda moved on from there. But, um, so, and even on my social media, I'm not a big social media guy. I have to go out and look for the stuff. It's not coming, like a lot of stuff's not coming up on my feed. So I know there's outrage out there. I know there's concern.
Sure.
Um, and, you know, and I get it. I do understand it, but it's, it, we are in one of these situations and, and my, my response to that citizen is gonna be, look, you know, in my 17-year career, cause that's all I can speak to, you know, this is what we've done. We've taken these many rollbacks. We've tried our best to keep your tax rate down. You know, and if you look at any time we raised taxes, it has been because of, something has happened. Whether it be an austerity reduction, some, something else would have impacted the school system. Or now you have this, you know, these increased equalization grants, you know, I'm sorry, less equalization grants, increased, um, five mil share, plus the healthcare insurance. And, and I think it's, it's not, and I don't wanna point fingers at the state, cause you know.
I understand.
They're following, they're following their formula. This has been around. And this is what I tell everybody. I was telling some folks about this. The, the local fair share is nothing new, but the health insurance cost is new. And that's what I'm saying. Yeah, normally we could probably get through it if it's just the local fair share and, and the equalization, you know, maybe we might not take such a huge, um, you know, the rollback and it, it's not as large. But when you put all this stuff together, plus the raises, right? And then, then that we're in a situation, it's like, you know, hopefully within the next few years, this is all gonna kinda level out.
Right.
And kinda go.
Well, I came out of the corporate world, Richard, and that's true. Um, and where I worked, um, I was in total rewards department for a company that, you know, HR and benefits and payroll and, and you would get a 3, 4% raise simultaneously, your insurance would go up and negate the raise that you got. And so believe you me, we heard that in the corporate world. And that's kinda where we are in the school board, in the school system. You know, we're gonna give you money, we're gonna get, pay all the teachers, but then we're gonna turn right around and we're gonna go up on your insurance. And that's not uncommon anywhere in the corporate world. So.
You're right. And that doesn't get talked about a lot, but you're right. All of a sudden your insurance is more.
That's right.
Um, so your insurance, so you're, you're looking at your check going, I'm not bringing home any more than last year. Yeah, but you still have insurance.
Yeah.
That's great. But, you know, I'm still paying more for gas, more for groceries, more for everything else. So, um, 4%, though, yeah, that's.
Another significant, uh, expenditure we have is the cost of diesel. I mean, if you think about running our school buses and they all run on diesel, and you know what diesel's done over the last couple of years. So that's a, that's a huge cost that has come in on top of everything else we've talked about. So. You know, we're gonna have budget meetings. I think David talked about it, starting next week. And, you know, people need to, if they wanna learn more, they have an opportunity maybe to speak. Um, it, we're gonna have the first one on Tuesday at 11:00 and then the next, that same day on Tuesday afternoon at 6:00. And then the next one, I think it's the 13th, the following Tuesday at 6:00, I think, or maybe, uh, maybe next week. Yeah, anyway, I, I would encourage them, you know, to come and just, you know, may, if anything, educate yourselves of some of the challenges. You know, it's not like we are bad people. I mean, like David said, we wanna, we're, our, our property taxes are going up too. It's just, we don't have a whole lot of options. Um, and we're trying to do the best we can with the tools that we've been given, so.
I do wanna address one thing that I did see, um, and I don't know if we have time.
Oh, we do. And I've got another question, probably we're gonna lead right into what, there's a citizen out there that had a question about the process from your.
Yeah, so, and, and I just say that, cause I see this a lot and, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I don't pretend to be one. Um, but the, as I understand it, the county commission, we, we set the mill rate, certify it to our fiscal authority, which is the commissioners. They don't have an option to change it.
Or send it back. They, they can't say, listen, board, the, the, you know, citizens are outraged and we don't, we're sending this back. You need to put a pencil, sharpen it up and then bring it back.
I believe the only mechanism is where it kinda gets funny is when the school system goes over 20 mils.
Now, that's correct. I've heard that, but you're nowhere near that.
Near that, never.
So under 14, over 20, there's different mechanisms that kick in.
And if I can, I'm just, this is the, this is the Georgia constitution, right? Local taxes for education. Uh, the board of education of each system shall annually certify to its fiscal authority or authorities, a school tax not greater than 20 mils per dollar for the support and maintenance of education. Said fiscal authority or authorities shall annually levy said tax upon the assessed value of tax on property. That mean, that word shall, in, you know, my very little legal experience.
Sure.
When, when shall, it's not may, it's not should, it's not by a majority vote, it's shall.
So if the board.
The county commissioners do not have an option. They have to apply that, that rate.
So they look at it and they just say, basically, well, we have to ratify and send it back to you. Because yes, somebody online, here again, you know, that's stuff going around and I wanted you to come here that I can clear up for folks is, you know, they say that the board of education or you guys, when you send it to commissioner, the commissioners could say, nope, not gonna approve this. Whether it's three, two against or what, it just, the fact is, they, that's it. I mean, you know, it's almost a formality, I guess you wanna call it. You're saying, here's what it is. But you really, you know, it, it's not up to you to approve this since. Um, and I'm sure the commissioners will appreciate that because there'll be a lot of, you know, like, hey, you know, I'm gonna call my commissioner and tell him, don't approve this. We don't agree, but, um, that's, that's not their job. I mean, that, that's, that's good to clear up, cause that was one of the questions also.
You just work, go ahead.
There was one more about the open records request, if you, um, and, and, and the fact that.
Yeah, I can read that question as well, real quick.
We can address that.
Just to say, so, um, one of the viewers online said, with around 70% of taxpayer dollars going to fund the school system, why would the school system choose to not be totally transparent by presenting and present a fully disclosed budget instead of just three pages? And so what the citizen's saying is, well, let me finish. He said, the county uh, receives just a third of the tax revenue from our property tax bill. And they have a budget presentation of more than 160 pages. So what the citizen's saying is, if I open, do an open records request and I wanna look at your budget, I get essentially three pages. So it, it, it's a real high overview. It doesn't drill down as far as that citizen says he'd like to see. Whereas if I do the same thing for the county with their budget, they give me 160 pages, cause they've drilled down a little further.
Right. Well, um, I do know, let me talk about the transparency thing. And that's kind of a, little kinda sticks in my.
Crawl.
Um, you know, I do, I feel like as a school system, especially since, uh, Chance has taken on, you know, we've asked him to really engage, engage our community, um, as best, as best as you can. And we talked a lot about, you know, they wanted, you know, some wanted us to change, cause the commissioners, we all meet at the same time. You know, we looked at ours, we just couldn't do it, you know, so we said, hey, we're gonna livestream and we'll archive everything. So if you can't be there, you can at least see it live. If you can't physically come, you can see it live. Or you can watch it, you know, we're gonna do what we can to make sure that everything we do is, is open and honest. And then we also created a lighthouse academy where we just, we put it out there for citizens. If you wanna learn more about our school system, what we do, how it operates, basically the business of school. Would, they did a weekly, I forget how long it went, just a, 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 kinda like a leadership class on, on how schools run, just for, for citizens.
Yeah.
You had to apply and then you got to come in there and, and you kinda got, so like, as far as transparency is concerned, we've done a lot. Now, a specific records request, you know, I do know, all I know is that they ask for, we do, a lot of times with schools, I'll just tell you, schools run on a chart of accounts, you know, you have. a chart of accounts, you know, you have allotment sheets and a lot of them, like this is the state allotment page. It's one page.
Right.
It's just kind of the way school finance works a lot of times. Um, and then you have your audit. So I believe, and I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure that eventually we got it to where we were giving the 50 something page audit, which has our, all of our budget, our revenues and has our expenditures down by category. So it'll be like, you know, X amount of million dollars was spent on salaries, X amount of million dollars was spent, you know, and it's, it's like 50 something pages, you know, and, and kind of breaks it down that way. I mean, if they want individual, you know, you know, Dave Moller makes.
Well, and I don't know that that's necessarily what the citizen's saying.
That's.
I, I guess it's.
It would be.
I don't think anybody's going to say teachers don't get paid or they get paid too much. Excuse me. I, I, I don't think that's necessarily, I guess they're just trying to look at everything, like, you know, from a business perspective, you talked about it, Susan. You know, first thing that happens when we start looking like, hey, we're running in the red. Well, we need to break down everything. Well, what categories are we, well, we need to really take this category because this looks like the one. And we need to really open that one up and look through that whole category. We're here, here, we're good, right? But here we look like we've got a problem. And so that's where we want to look. So.
Well, to that note though, uh, the, the, the audits that we've done every year, we have passed with flying colors and they do the deep dives into that information. And so that's, that audit report is what has been provided. So there's no, there's no non-transparency there. I mean, it, it is what we provide to the state who has come in and said, you know, you, you passed with flying colors. So.
And I don't want anybody to miss, to misinterpret this saying that they don't have a right for that. They do.
They do. Yeah.
Um, and we'll, you know, those conversations, we're going to continue the conversations because, you know, constituents have every right. And I'll support that. A hundred percent all the time as well, you know, and we might not agree at the end of the day, but it is what it is, you know? So, but yeah, that's kind of, kind of where I feel like we're at. At this point, I do want to just point out, one of the things you kind of touched on Mitchell's legislation for the, the penny sales tax. And, and it's not for school systems.
No.
Well, I think if we all, one thing they can do, if you ask, nobody's asking me for my plan, but I'm going to give it to you anyway. Follow through with that. We need to, we need to preserve East Bloss, right? We have to report because facilities is a ton of money. And why not have people driving through here on our 75 help us out with that stuff?
Sure.
So preserve East Bloss, allow us, it should be optional for counties to do, is it a floss? I don't know what he calls it.
Well, yeah, you can get lost in the acronym.
Yeah. So I know it's that, that penalty, add that extra penny sales tax. I think that would be, and then they can, if they, if they preserve East Bloss, allow us to use another penny sales tax to do what we need to do as far as operational stuff is concerned. And then wait, uh, students in poverty, wait, they funded through a wait system and get rid of the equalization. You know, we collect what? Probably around somewhere, this is a guesstimate, $10 million a year in East Bloss funds. So if you say, all right, well, that'll give us $10 million a year for operational costs, you get rid of our lo- local mill, local fair share. Right. For us, that's $23 million. We wouldn't be sitting here. We wouldn't be sitting here. But the problem, I don't think the state will do that is because they only, they collect those less five mils of property taxes around the state of Georgia, but they only disperse about half of it.
So where's the other half?
That's a.
That's a good question.
That's a great question. I'm sure it's going to run stuff for the state, but, but that, that needs to be asked because they're taking local property tax and they'll say they won't because they say, no, we don't take it. We just, we just don't give you as much on the QBE funding. It, it's, it's the same thing because it's the value of fair, of local fair share of your property values. So they, they take that property tax money back. And then they're distributing it, but they're not distributing all of it for the purposes that they said, because it's supposed to be to fund poverty systems and poverty.
That need it. Right.
But they're, they're only doing 50%. So that's, I mean, let's, let's, and I don't want to point, but I want to work with, I want to work with Mitchell on, I want to help him pass something like that. Cause I do think that would be a, a significant impact for us. And I think there needs to be some stuff in there that says, you know, no penny sales tax, if there's not a, a good impact on property taxes, right? I mean, we don't want to do everything. We're going to property tax you on a sales tax, but we're also going to, there needs to be some guarantees for our constituents in there. But I think through conversation, a little bit of work, we might be able to find a way to make some of this stuff happen. But you need, like you said, we need the whole, everybody in the state to get it to go and pass.
Well, we do, but I think that's what I was going to say is the whole state suffering from this problem too. Now, this isn't unique to Catoosa County. Property values have gone up statewide. And so with that, and with everything you're talking about from a state level, insurance going up, every school system got hit with that same thing. I'm sure there's every school system and every board in the state right now is having similar conversations with their citizens. So I'm sure it's going to come to a head with our next, next legislative session, because this is something that's really impacting every citizen in the state.
That's correct. And if you look at school systems that have taken a partial rollback or a rollback this year, despite this, look at their, look at, look at their mill rate. I mean, if they're, if you want to come to me and say, well, you know, this county's taking a rollback. Well, if they're taking a rollback to 17.
17. Yeah.
And you're at, you know, we're at 15.
Right.
Let's.
That's what I've seen.
Sure.
So I think that's, because that'll, you know, so and so didn't do it. Well, let's see what their rate was.
Well, I'd encourage everybody, yeah, go to the meetings, you know, participate, learn more. Thank you too for coming.
Yeah, thanks.
This is, you know, only a tip of the iceberg, obviously. But I hope this helps everybody have a little bit better understanding of what's transpiring and taking place. And I know Mitchell's going to come in here next and he's going to lay out the state side. It's not a fun time. I get it.
It's not.
Everybody's suffering.
You know, we didn't even talk about, you know, there's, there's headlines in the news this week where Clayton County is just starting school with 200 teacher vacancies open. There's a teacher shortage on the way. There's, there's less, there's less students in teacher preparation colleges right now. And for the first time in the state of Georgia, as I understand it, even in the elementary side. So that's, that's going to be another, I mean, you look at, we're, we're now in the business world where we're competing for workforce. Well, you know, you can go to Walker, Whitfield, Gordon, us, Hamilton, we're all competing for talent now.
Correct.
You should, you should be like, oh, I want to go teach here. Oh, I grew up here. I want to go teach there. Now we're all competing for talent because hey, well, I can go down to Whitfield and make, you know, five, $6,000 more on the start. Or I can go, I can go here and make a little bit more. I can go to Tennessee where they guarantee $50,000 for every teacher starting. Right? So, I mean, there's a lot of factors that are playing into this. But we got to protect our teachers. We got to protect our students. We got to protect our services and what we do, our football, basketball, all that good stuff. The stuff that makes the county great. We got to do that. So.
Thank you for coming because that is ultimately the most important thing.
A hundred percent.
A hundred percent. Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming. Until next time and stay tuned for our next episode with Mitchell Horner. Thanks for tuning in and have a great weekend.